Start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the Black. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. I'll now turn things over to the superintendent for the celebration of excellence.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see all of you. First this evening, we are going to celebrate BCS summer learning and I'm going to turn it over to Amela. But before I do, I would just like to offer the board's congratulations. She was married over the summer. She is now Mrs. Kelleher. So now I will turn it over to Mrs. Kelleher.
Bolton Center School Summer Learning Challenge of 2023 consisted of the Governor's Reading Challenge and the Governor's Math Challenge for students entering kindergarten to fourth grade. And then it consisted of the Governor's Math Challenge and the Reading Uno Challenge that our BCS teachers made for students entering middle school. Hard copies and virtual copies of all information needed and all activities were sent home to parents. And parents also received detailed information about how students could complete the challenge. So what students needed to do was complete their reading log. And then they needed to complete three out of nine of the math activities given by the governor. And once they did this, they could return it to me by tomorrow, actually. And all the students who completed it and returned to me are going to be invited to our ice cream social in a couple of weeks at BCS. So they're super excited about that. We have three students here tonight. The first is Natalia Lucicino in first grade. We have Elliot Garcia in fifth grade and Amelia Martinez in seventh grade. So first up is Natalia and she's here to tell you a little bit about her experience. And you'll see on the board some of her work that she did over the summer is shown.
This summer, I read Pinkalicious books and I read the book Corduroy where he loses his button. I like the books because the characters my own adventures. My favorite part of the summer learning was the ice cream challenge. I counted the flavors of ice cream. Chocolate, vanilla, strawberry, and chocolate chip. I like, I ate lots of ice cream this summer too. My pride is that I'm invited to the ice cream social at Bolton Center School.
And then we have Elliot Garcia in fifth grade.
The summer learning challenges helped me read more books than I usually read over the summer. One of the books I read was Life of the Samurai. And it was a fun book because you got to choose your own adventure. The math challenge was fun because I got to go outside and do fun things. One activity I did was the playground challenge where I went to the playground at BCS and the playground at Charter Oak. My mom and I found the area and perimeter of each playground that I got to play. The summer learning challenge was a good experience because if you do it, you get a fun reward in the end.
This year's summer learning experience was entertaining. For the reading challenge, I read four books and wrote a paragraph on each book about what it was about, including a cliffhanger so that readers would want to read the whole book. Also, the math challenge got me to go outside more because I could do some of the activities outside, like the beach and hiking activity. I liked completing the movement activity which I enjoyed because it made me exercise by jump roping for seven days. And then I made a photograph to show how many jumps I did each day. I tried my hardest to finish all the tasks. I'm pleased that I got to complete this year's summer running challenge before going into high school.
Thank you very much. Nice job. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Maselli, who is going to share some great news about our EHS band.
Yes, thank you. So as many of you know, for many years, the Bolton Fire Department has organized ceremony for September 11th. This year was actually organized by Bolton High School graduate from 2020 and now Lieutenant Melissa Lichette. So it was nice to work with her. We had eighteen members of the band and four of our singers all participate on Monday night. And honestly, I'm super grateful to Tyler Langworthy, who's with us tonight. We're going to hear the students play and Dan Ayer because on the eighth day of school, they had a performance, just saying. Mr. Lang.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you all very much. That is a great, great performance.
Could Miss Langworthy introduce our?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you can.
Something else he wants to say.
Oh, my bad. Sorry. Yes, go, sir.
We were really lucky to have eighteen of our students come out. You know, I was, as we were preparing this, I was like, how's that first rehearsal gonna go? And they all came ready to rock and roll. We're super happy. The students we have here tonight are Chris Allenson, Russell CNS, Morgan Bonahyudo, Ally Hartsock, Emily Maher, Jake Park, Brooke Olada, Cooper Ruckman, Victor Huang, Andrew Goodness, Nico Jaresoli, Isabella Zakowski, and Gavin Chu. So we are very fortunate. We're grateful to the board for supporting this department.
Thank you. Great job. And that concludes our celebration of excellence tonight with a smile.
All right. Feel free to stay or leave if you want. Now we'll move on.
Just go real fast.
Sure.
For our board members, the remaining members of the Proud Eighteen are either playing volleyball or running around cross-country field.
Thanks.
All right. Now we will move on to the comments from the audience part of our program. And is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment? Yeah, it's been a while since we've been in person. I remember what we used to do. Can project from there or?
Yeah, if you want to say, just say your name and address. Okay, so my name is Ashley Brady. I am a parent in the Bolton School system for ten years now. I have two boys in high school and then a first and third grader at the Center School. And I'm here because I think that we as parents should be able to both change the green cleaning. Did you know how, I'm not sure how to use the hashtag, but I know Bolton Center School only uses green cleaner collectively. The vast majority of parents that speak to you aren't aware of this. And I feel like if everybody knew and what had the ability to choose, I think that people would choose to, you know, use Clorox Family Sol product. I know personally, my family, you know, my daughter deals with autoimmune issues. And, you know, last year, the constant barrage, and it's just basic, you know, cold germs, flu, norovirus, things like that. But the way my daughter is immune to it more because when she's clearing those things, she gets dinner plate sized ties and ten days of lymph nodes inflamed in her stomach. And the only thing that can fix that is being on steroids. And these are things that, you know, in the summertime, this isn't a chronic issue that we deal with your route. This is just purely, you know, during the school year and things that can just be avoided, you know, because this is just her body overreacting from the day to day. You know, she told me that in the cafeteria, this vantage thing is as far as a bucket of brown water in a rag, you know, that goes from table to table. And already, we haven't had a full week of school. And my son, who's in Mrs. Brower's class, in first grade, everybody is vomiting already. I saw it every day when I pick him up, that this person threw up, that person threw up. And green cleaners, even your basic Clorox and Lithol are not going to be able to handle that. And of course, you know, I spoke to the state of Connecticut, the Health Department, and asked them what's going on with the deal. And yes, they can treat, you know, the spot on the floor, you know, that the vomit. But what is going on to every single surface in the room? You know, my sister has been a registered nurse at the Arbor's dealing with the elderly in Manchester. And she gave me a product, brought the product with me to leave with you guys if you want to take a look at it. It is leach-free, no harsh chemicals, thirty-second contact, kills norovirus, kills ping dye, kills everything. I, my husband and I, we would be willing to donate two bottles per classroom in both schools and continue to either fundraise or if you're able to implement sanitation immediately, we would be willing to fund that. And then my sister-in-law, Deanna Lloyd, is the president of the PPI at BCS. And so we together, our forces combined, I guess it would really be able to be prepared for the winter. You know, my daughter's doctor tells me that if things continue, we have no choice but to put her on steroids continuously, which would cause for her probably a thirty-pound permanent weight gain for an eight-year-old girl, which is pretty traumatic and highly avoidable. And the state also said that, you know, it's up to each individual district on what to really do. It's not, you know, set in stone. And I think this came for maybe permission for Deanna and I to be able to find a way, the parents to vote or find for the majority and have implement sanitation as quickly as possible. Because I feel like the rules set in, you know, the pre-pandemic world, I believe it was implemented in 2012 by the parent of an asthmatic child who was worried about, you know, H2O and things like that. I feel like that in the post-pandemic days where, you know, ten years, you know, in the future now, even the journalists have probably mutated that, you know, may need screen later even less effective. So hopefully you can just look forward and everybody will be happier and healthier. Yay. The product for you guys.
We don't, potentially you don't look.
So typically, the comments from the audience portion is just a place for airing of grievances or comments or happinesses or whatever else. So if you want to leave that with the administration, that will go through the proper channels. To get your message out, yes.
After the fourth kid threw up in my son's class. I wasn't necessarily sure, you know, which way to go about it. But absolutely, I could put this in an email for you. If you guys want to let me know the best, I wasn't sure how to.
Yep. Do you want to send me an email?
Yes, I was gonna say, I was going to do that initially, but then I looked at all your emails and the email address was just without reply.
Can you turn around and give her my email address? Right? Yeah, do not reply because otherwise I get everyone's bounce back to me. Seven thousand emails every time I send it. No, no, you're totally fine. If you could leave right up here, if you don't mind, if you have it with you. Because I would like to give it to our head of maintenance to take a look at as well. That would be helpful. Okay? And if you send me an email tomorrow or Monday, and then I'll follow up with you next week, okay? Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for coming forward and you've gotten your message across and we all have awareness now and we can see, we can move forward. Oh, that's fine. I neither. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make a comment this evening? Natalia? No. Okay. Thank you very much. Now, do we have any additions to the agenda?
We need to add two C curriculum to the agenda, please. Under E.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, on to routine business and the approval of minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the August 24th, 2023 Board of Education Business Meeting. Ben and Rea, you have any questions, comments, or edits for these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, anyone abstaining? Passes on to Board of Education Committee reports and start with Finance.
Oh. The 2023-24 budget is five percent expanded as compared with five percent in September of last year. Just a reminder that special education is an ever-changing landscape. And Superintendent Heck will review the transfers from July and August. And the 22-23 budget has been closed out. And the Board of Education is returning an unhonored amount of $370,112 to the town of Bolton. Superintendent Heck will review the 2022-23 unaudited budget and the June transfers.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to do the July and August transfers first, please. We had a transfer to cover the FCS fire suppression repairs and electrical repairs required for 2023 compliance per new fire codes. That's the $9,276 transfer. We also had a transfer to cover shortfall in FCS for the semi-annual inspection and new annual hood cleaning and maintenance that is now required. And shortfall in math budget for iReady subscription at the high school and additional textbooks needed for Spanish three. And then, as we have shared, we are five percent expended currently in this year's budget. Now on to the June transfers. We had a transfer to music for repairs for the Selmer oboe. We had a transfer to FCS to purchase supplies at the end of the year due to price inflation. We funded the new pilot for the K-5 reading materials to help teachers do some PD last spring and prepare for the 23-24 school year. We had a transfer for science to cover increase in the Clean Harbers Lab chemical waste management. A transfer reclass to cover office supplies. Transfer for athletic awards to cover banner upgrade and end-of-the-year awards. Reclass for BCS postage machine. ELA to cover instructional supply shortfall. We had a transfer to cover music instrument repairs, graduation portraits, purchase athletic supplies. We purchased a replacement oboe which was broken and unusable, as well as a new French horn to accommodate a substantial growth in our music program and filling out the needs of our growing ensemble. And reclass for Teacher Appreciation Week for food and a, again, of course, postage shortfall. Any questions about the transfers? Right? Hearing none? Then with regards to the end of the year closeout of last year's budget, I just want to remind the board that a majority of the monies that were returned were due to new hires, being hired at a lower rate than the people that they replaced. We were not fully staffed throughout the year, which also created savings in health insurance as well as in salaries. And we had changes in insurance. We had some utility savings. We had some transportation savings due to credits from M&amp;J when we did not have all of our buses running throughout the year due to staffing shortages for them as well. I want to also note that because we had some savings in salaries and benefits, we were able to manage the deficit in special education to the tune of $181,603. Had we not had that savings, we would have had to go to the Board of Finance for an ask for a special appropriation for special ed. Any questions on that? All right, so I'll need a motion for the June transfers and then one for the July and August transfers, please.
Separate motions?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to approve the June transfers.
Thank you. Second, please.
Anyone have any questions or comments on the June transfers? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed? Standing, heard everybody say aye. Now looking for a motion to approve July and August.
Together, yeah.
Motion to approve the transfers of July and August.
I'd like to make motion to approve the July and August transfers.
Ben and Sue, do we have any questions or comments on these fiscal year? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Standing. It's on to personnel. The Personnel Committee has met a number of times over the summer and a couple of times in the fall regarding contracts. We have reached a kind of agreement off the record with the teachers' union and we'll be discussing it later this evening and hopefully ratifying it in executive session. We also are on to the custodian contract where we're exchanging initial proposals. Anyone have any questions or we can discuss them later on the curriculum?
Curriculum met briefly on Monday. Mr. Ayers had a proposal for a new class for modern band class, which he said goes out of student request. And it's more of like a rock and roll style. And so it sounded really cool and minimal financial impact. I think there's going to be a presentation on today.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Yes, I just talked about it briefly and Mr. Ayers.
That was a, was a quick.
Thank you very much. Now we can move on to BHS Student Representative Report.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to talk about three big topics. The first day of school, we had a unique bell schedule to let students re-acclimate to the school year. It was mostly beneficial to the freshmen coming into high school for the first time, allow them to adjust to their new schedules. In addition, student council was able to decorate the respective hallways before the school year started and that turned out amazing. Each hallway looked incredible. I'm sure there's pictures somewhere. I can find those if necessary. Sports, fall sports has kicked off. The soccer team are 0-1 and they have a game Friday, the boy soccer team, that is. The girls soccer team are also 1-0 with a Friday game against Coventry. Volleyball are 1-0 with a match they're currently playing in the gym right now. Cross country, the boys place fourth at their last meet and the girls not place top eight. And they have a meet today at Windsor Locks as we speak. Next week, student council will be hosting, start with Hello Week. On tomorrow, the student council will be hanging posters throughout the school. On Monday, there will be a club fair. On Wednesday, there will be brief, short games during lunchtime. And pending leadership approval line, we have approval for Bolton Spiritware Day on Thursday.
Mean that today.
Perfect. We will have a Bolton Spiritware Day on Thursday and a connections period on Thursday where students will use their given connections pass for fun activities with the teachers, which we have once a semester, once a quarter. And then on Friday, there will be an ice cream social during lunchtime that opens to all students.
Awesome. Thank you, Andrew. Feel free to stay, but if you need to go to do other things, you can do so. Yes, go eat dinner. Thanks, Andrew.
Okay, community meeting reports. Does anyone have any of those? All right, I'll now turn things over to the superintendent for the superintendent's schools report.
All right, first I'm gonna start with Director Goldsneider, who's gonna talk about our extended school year program.
So once again, we had a very successful extended school year program at Bolton Center School. We had a number of students and a number of staff participate. Students worked really hard this year, I mean harder than usual, I think. They were really into it and kind of make it a little bit fun. So coming to school in the summer is not total torture. So they worked on their emerging skills, their self-sufficiency skills. And they really put a lot of effort. I want to thank the Bolton Center School Administration for hosting us again and all the staff, the parents, the services people who came in this summer to work with the kids again. Some of them don't get a break all summer and I just want to say thank you. It was a really good summer. We'll find it really very quickly and we saw some nice progress in some of the kids, so. Thanks for all the support.
Thank you. Kudos to you. Job well done. Thank you. All right, Mr. GR, turning it over to you for a BCS update. Sure.
Hey, everybody. I think it's time to earlier performance for more kids. Just a couple of odds and ends. The opening of school has been very successful. The school leadership team met several times over the summer to plan for the year, work on the school plan, which we'll be hearing about in the next couple of months and to just get ready for the year, which they did an amazing job. We welcomed staff back on the 28th, which was awesome, a great PD day. We had convocation, which was, everybody was there with new staff, daily subs, everybody was in attendance. We had a well-attended meet and greet for K through five where parents came into the building. They walked the building, stopped at the classroom, saw teachers, brought in school supplies. My own sons in kindergarten, so it was nice to see it from that end going into the meet and greet. And then also gave me some ideas for our own. First day of school was on the 30th. Awesome. Staff was all outside welcoming the students, getting off the buses, arrival dismissal. Everything was very, I think we're a well-oiled machine at this point, since we've gone to one schedule a few years ago with all of our routines with arrival dismissal. Students very quickly on that Monday, four days later, were going right on their own kindergarten, even right to where they needed to be. We were out there monitoring, but they were, I'm like, you need help? No, I know I'm going. And they went right to their classrooms, which is awesome to see. Two other things, open houses. We have our open houses coming up. September 21st is K to five's open house, six, eight o'clock. And then September 26th is sixth through eighth grades open house. Those are usually very well attended and we'll kick off the evening. Mrs. Kelleher, myself, and some of the other staff talking to the parents for about ten or fifteen minutes. And then what's a lot of fun is the middle school parents follow a bell schedule. So they have to follow their kid's schedule and we give them three minutes of passing time. We have the bells going. So that's fun too, because they have no idea where they're going and they're scrambling. So it's a fun evening. We have our walkathon coming up on October 17th. Booster Thon, which is the company that we use, came out to the staff meeting the other day, talked to the staff about all the festivities, the staff that they're gonna have present on school grounds, the lessons that they do with the students. So we're super excited for the walkathon. Our goal this year is to raise $20,000. It's our biggest fundraiser and we're usually right around there. So the staff, the PTA is amazing, doing an amazing job with that fundraiser. Just jotted it down once I heard it, but we also started sports and things are going great. We have over sixty students participating in boys and girls soccer and cross-country. So we're off to a great start with sports. A little bit of rain though has been a damper on the fields, but we are well up and running. A great addition this year has been Parent Square, which is our new platform for communication. One of our school goals is continuing school home communication and that's a big emphasis for us. Parent Square allows the staff to post pictures, blurs what's going on during the day. It's the main communication tool for the superintendent, for the administration, for the teachers. It almost has that social media feel because you scroll through the app and I receive a lot of positive feedback from parents that it's very easy to use. It's easy to communicate with staff. So that's been a great addition this year. And last but not least, and I'm kind of reiterating what Superintendent Heck said at the last meeting, the buildings and grounds are phenomenal. And that's a real kudos and shout out to John Botrymovich and the guys who did a phenomenal job with the outside of the building, inside the building, the hallways. And it went up very to the last day because we had ESY going during the school year and they did a great job to get the building ready. All positive, all good stuff.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Mr. Maselli, you're up next for? Mr. Muselli, you're up next for a VHS update, please.
Well, just add to all the great things that uh, you heard from Andrew, um, our student rep. Um, we actually started school before school started. Uh, we had a, a large number of staff and our grade nine students actually came in on the twenty-third for uh, twenty-twenty-seven kickoff day. Um, amazing attendance, so the summer's not even over and we had eighty percent of our ninth graders arrive. And fifty percent of those kids had parents who could stay and spent an hour uh, with myself and Christine Johnson touring the building. So absolute huge turnout, that was great. Um, you know, the students met with the upperclassmen, got their schedules, but they also started learning some of the academic expect, expectations for the year to get the year started off really well. And then we all had lunch together. Uh, we've also already held our open house. We had over twenty-five percent of our families could make it uh, last week for open house. Um, we had over a dozen members of Student Council and National Honor Society on hand to help with those parents. Uh, and we did a, a quick survey afterwards with lots of real positive response. Um, as Andrew mentioned, sports are, are, have already taken off and um, Ms. Johnson did a little bit of math and I, if she, she did her math right, I have, I have faith in you. Uh, forty-six percent of our students are currently enrolled um, participating in a fall sport. Wow, so that's, that's, that's pretty amazing.
It's great.
We're keeping the, the foot on the gas. Uh, we're doing a club fair to get clubs up and running starting next week. We have already planned a date for homecoming. Um, which will be the dance and the power football. Uh, school spirit is already running high and to echo um, Mr. GR's comments. Uh, everybody loves Parent Square. Uh, we started using it uh, middle of last year. Um, and beyond all the things that Daryl mentioned, I won't repeat, but being able to pivot on those hot days, we actually completely rearranged the entire normal schedule that would have been on that, the second day was a Thursday, I guess. Um, to meet the needs of kids and because we communicate with parents and with students, I only heard of one student who was, oops, I was late for school because of the change of things and admitted that it turned the notifications off on Student Square. Um, and that's back on now. We actually have um, almost a hundred percent participation in enrollment at Student Square by both students and families, which is pretty amazing. So thank you to the superintendents for purchasing that for us last year. We tested it out and we, we've proven it's a good fit for Bolton, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now I'm going to turn it over to Director Casper, who is going to give a presentation on the twenty-two, twenty-three assessment results.
Very exciting, because this is my first in-person presentation, so I'm happy about it.
First.
First of many, sharing. No pressure there, Monica.
And I also have that, as I can't say, from this distance. So um, last year we did talk about uh, twenty-one, twenty-two being the new baseline. So we are continuing to work up with those numbers and I'm hoping that this has a good range. Um, this is sort of the, the disclaimer, we know this is only one measure, we know it's only one data point. It's got some, you know, it does show us where students are achieving, it shows us some areas where we need to focus. Um, but it's, it's not useful, it's like there's no one assessment that's going to be the answer to everything. Uh, but it does give us a fair idea of where we need to um, put some of our energy. So our ELA results, what we can see is that, and you'll see it on the next, it's actually on the next slide, is we outperform the state in almost all areas. Uh, what you can see is longitudinally, you'll see the students that, you know, the grade levels that look like they're a little bit lower, grade four to grade five. Um, those students went up significantly from grade four to grade five. So for example, students who are in the orange, I mean in the blue here, are the students who are in the orange. And I did do a report for teachers that shows that we're catching up, we're catching up to our pre-pandemic numbers, which is um, great news. What can I say about this? So um, we do just continue to outperform the state. Um, we started that new wordwork program last year that was approved uh, Sunday, essentials, because there wasn't really uh, spelling wordwork program past second grade. So this is three through five, so we're starting to see three. If you go back, you can start to see three really reap those benefits. And four and five, it was just a little bit more of catch-up for them because they hadn't had that for a couple of years because they ended in second grade. So now there's more continuity, so I think that we're going to continue to see uh, improvement. Our students continue to improve and develop their skills in middle school. Um, and we know that we need some additional support in grades four and five, but students in grade five show improvement over fourth grade here, which is what we just talked about. So there's that slow, they're, they're, they're starting to catch up to where they were. Um, in fact, they're almost, which is great. Um, we are in our pilot year zero of EL Imagine Learning, which is a state-approved uh, reading program that uh, includes authentic literature, it works some of the wordwork in, uh, has skills for students. We want to make sure everything is based in the science of reading. There's ongoing support. I know that the PLC meetings are already well underway and have been. Um, and this year we are making a concerted effort to administer interim assessment blocks in grades three through eight. Those are small assessments that are targeted to specific skills that are put out from SBACK. And when you get the results, it's very telling. You could see where your students did them best, you could see where they might have been struggling the most. You can look at individual student responses, which you can't do on the SBACK, so you can really start to drill down. So it's very exciting. Um, and instructional coaching and support, I can't say enough things about the support of, of um, Principal Giard, Assistant Principal Keller, and our instructional coach Kelly Bear. They, they've been phenomenal, making sure that teachers get what they need, absolutely everything that they need to do their job. Um, especially where this reading pilot goes. Our results in math, um, again, mostly outperforming the state. We are seeing, you know, we know that there is uh, work to be done that we have to do in fourth and fifth grade, even though they're still catching up and there's still improvement, it's not as quick as we would like. And I do think that an advantage this year was we were able to have these scores practically in real time. And I know that when Mrs. Keller was working on the schedule, she was making some changes to make sure that there was more extended time for math based on this. So we were able to make decisions in June preparing for this year. It's not like in the past where we got these results in July and then we're kind of scrambling to do something we were able to plan with purpose. So, um, again, our performing, we've got a great starting point that we want to continue. We, we are aware of the skill gaps that are there and are putting measures in place to address them. Um, and grade four has always had a little bit of a leap, like where they are no longer just learning the math, they're learning to apply it in a variety of situations. So, uh, again, we are going to continue with looking at our universal screens. We have a new math coach in place, so we're very excited about that, that there's going to be more success um, and more support for um, teachers and for our students in small groups with a math coach. Uh, PL sci, PLC time is also used for both math and ELA, as you know. Um, more multi-step problems, that seems to be where um, we need to focus some of our energy because our students are very good at their calculations. But sometimes looking at how that's applied in a real-life situation, so how can we create those situations so they have more practice? And the same interim assessment blocks for math uh, based on areas of need. So they use the data that we have from these assessments and then look at which of the more focused interim assessments, the smaller ones will help us improve scores. Um, next generation science standard, same thing, outperforming the state and um, significant improvement. The reason, I think, fifth grade is always going to be a little bit lower and you'll see that in, in many districts and that is, that's their first time with this test. And it is a test unlike any other assessment they took. It really gives them like little videos, like what do you think is happening here? And there's so much critical thinking and they're just not used to seeing that on an online assessment that it takes them a little while to get used to it and as you can see, they quickly recover. Um, Connecticut School Day, there, this is um, where we were um, twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, there is a small, like when I say small, minuscule drop, but there's something very important to keep in mind. Last year, we had seventy-one students, was a large class. This year, there were forty-five students. Statistically, that point or fractions of points is probably one student or two. So, um, that really can skew your numbers. And we know where we want to focus. We have a, a relatively new math department that needs, you know, we want to make sure that they get whatever they need, any sort of resources that they perceive as um, something that will help them continue to improve student scores. Uh, reviewing curriculum assessment data is ongoing. We want to find possible gaps. And uh, they're all, they are always analyzing their SAT data, their PSAT data. In their PLCs, the academic leaders have been doing a wonderful job of looking at where they could possibly improve their instruction.
Thank you. Questions for Monica? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Monica. I'm sorry, that concludes my report this evening.
I see, that's good. Okay, uh, on to unfinished business, which we have none. Uh, and on to new business, resignations, we have.
Uh, we have one resignation from cafeteria employee Melissa Sognano and we wish her well and thank her for her service.
Um, okay, on to the new course that we heard about earlier, Modern Band. Who wants to tell us?
Monica's coming back.
All right.
And I have one. Um, so first of all, I wanted to say thank you to the subcommittee. Um, we normally meet in October and our last meeting is in May and Mr. Air came to me with this course um, midway, mid-May after our last meeting, but before the first meeting, so they were kind enough to have an ad hoc meeting very quickly so that we could discuss it, so that we could hopefully um, ask for approval and um, advertise this to our students through guidance. So last year, Mr. Air noticed that there was need for students who wanted to do a little bit more than guitar. Some students took lessons, they wanted to expand what they were doing. And he created a semester-long course, which we are hoping to offer in the spring called Modern Band. And he has written, he's got a fair outline of almost all of the units. There is a unit for guitar and bass, there is a unit for drums, there's a unit for keyboards, so it's sort of like a well-grounded, little bit of everything. And then it culminates with a unit on um, sound systems. So if you had a small ensemble, if you had a band, if you had friends in a musical group, that you would be able to um, understand the AV part of that as well. Um, so they have requested this type of course. This is based on student interest, where he saw a need. He did introduce some of the lessons last year to see how students would respond. Their response was overwhelmingly positive. They are really looking forward to being able to take a course like this. And we hopefully would even get more students in if it's approved and guidance has the opportunity to sort of advertise it, if you will. Um, they are also going to do a study of some more modern genres. And they, uh, referring to Mr. Air, he really feels like this is filling, it, it's just filling a gap for some students who want to expand their knowledge um, beyond, and they've loved guitar, but they want to expand it beyond. This is not going to replace it. We will still be offering guitar one and guitar two as needed, but I think that since our students are looking for a little bit more, uh, we are also going to achieve greater utilization of current equipment. We have the equipment. So there is no purchase of equipment. There is a small possible like for guitar strings and things that you would need anyway, uh, for guitar class. There is no additional staffing, there is no additional funding, it's working with what we currently have in districts.
Thank you. So, questions for Monica? Come on, this is your favorite kind of class.
Yeah. I was gonna ma, mention that, but I was gonna drag that really.
Simple, so cool when he first proposed it and that would be.
Doesn't cost anything.
Really.
I don't hear any doubts.
Right, really, I love that it doesn't cost anything, obviously, people have heard me say that over the years. And it fills a need and gets more kids interested or interested in different ways, then that's what we're here for, so I'm all in favor of course.
So we'll need a motion.
Yes, we need a motion to approve the new course, Modern Band.
I'll make the motion.
Second, go on a second, Sue.
I'll second.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments that we didn't already mention? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And opposed? All right.
Thank you very much. And our thanks to Mr. Air as well. Thank you, Monica.
Uh, and on to the BCS fire panel replacement bid waiver.
So I just want to remind the board that currently there is forty thousand dollars in approved Kappa monies for the BCS fire panel replacement. We have a quote for thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars from TPC Systems, which is on the Connecticut uh, bid list. Uh, TPC is the only vendor in Connecticut that provides EST fire panels, which are the fire panels that we have that are going to be upgraded. So we have to have that particular brand. And since the purchase is over twenty-five thousand dollars, I'm requesting that you waive the bid requirement so we can move forward with a fire panel replacement. Any questions for me on that?
What happens with any extra money over what was budgeted?
So what happens is it remains in Kappa and eventually uh, Kappa uh, or the selectmen take a look at all kind of leftover Kappa monies. And then from there, the selectmen make a decision on what's, how, how those are going to be used, right? Good question, though.
So what's the motion for, to, to cancel the waiver?
Um, um, motion to approve the bid waiver to replace the BCS fire panel.
So.
Thanks, Ben.
Second.
Thank you, Sue.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments about this? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Now opposed? Standing. All right, future business. Nope. Uh, very rarely have that. All right, uh, now we're looking to go into executive session, so I'm looking for a motion. We go into executive session for the purposes of discussion, the tentative agreement with the Teachers Union and to invite Superintendent Heck and Director Goldsneider.
We'll move.
I agree. Sue. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing. Thank you all.
Good night all, thank you.